We are recording.
Test on mine. I don't know if I've got my hooked up to the right mic.
I can hear you.
Okay, good, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it is 7:02. I'm John Engel and welcome to the Town of New Canaan Town Council Regular Meeting for Wednesday, January 20th, 2021. It is now 7:02. This is a virtual meeting only. Those wishing to participate are going to do so through Channel 79 or they can dial in through zoom.us slash J slash and the meeting number is 925-167-1532. Our first order of business on the agenda is of course the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in rising and as I welcome two scouts from from PAC 70, Tyler Boroff, a third grader and a bear scout and Kennedy Davis, who is a first grader and a tiger scout. So gentlemen, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I present the pledge of allegiance to America and to repower and for which stands one nation under God, indivisible and omnipotent.
Excellent. Thank you. You may all take your seats. And I wondered whether Tyler, would you like to tell us a little bit about being a bear scout with PAC 70? I know you're in the third grade.
What do you like about being a cub scout buddy?
I like all the adventures we go on.
So like camping and?
Like camping and doing hikes.
Things like that.
Yeah.
Can we see your uniform? I can only see a little bit of it. Oh, wow. Excellent. And what do those badges mean?
Bobcat, wolf and tiger.
And you get one of those each year or are those for accomplishments?
One each year.
Excellent. Great. Thank you, Tyler. And our other scout is Kennedy Davis and he's a first grader. Do you want to tell us anything about scouting?
Yes.
Great.
I people kids were scouting because scouting is for for kids and I love them.
That's great. Do you do you go camping?
Yes.
Yeah. You sleep in a tent?
Yes.
Is it cold?
Hmm, I hear the cold.
Great. Well, that's thank you very much, Kennedy. That's a it sounds like scouting is a lot of fun. Did did James Grosscall, you are the parent leader. Do you want to tell us anything about PAC 70?
Thank you very much, Chairman Engel, council members for selecting Winehan. Yeah, I'm James Grosscall, the cub master of PAC 70. We serve boys from kindergarten through fifth grade in town. There's 46 of us, including Tyler and Kennedy and possibly Campbell Bruce, who may have joined. I'm not sure if he was on the call. He's another tiger. Our focus is outdoor adventure and general goofiness for these kids. We're doing COVID safe activities this year, but still trying to get the kids out and active. So we've canoed on the Hoosatonic River. We had the older boys cook chili dinner and a pancake supper over a fire that they started with flint and tinder on our fall campout. We planted daffodils along Anderson Pond in Waveney Park. We raised miniature sailboats through a water-filled plastic rain gutter on a blustery evening in the lumberyard train station parking lot for our annual rain gutter regatta. We'd love more scouts to join us. As I said, our activities are COVID safe. They're all outside. We're doing more day hikes, campouts. We're doing an invasive species service project with the New Canaan Land Trust in the spring and this spring we're also doing our annual Pinewood Derby Race where the boys will race miniature cars down a down a track. You can Google us, New Canaan PAC 70. There's information on that page about how to sign up. We encourage anyone to join any time of year. We got a lot of great stuff coming up. So thank you very much for the time. Appreciate the opportunity.
Great. What ages are eligible?
Kindergarten through fifth grade. So the kindergartners are the Lions and fifth grade is Arrow of Light. After that, they would go into Scouts BSA, formerly known as Boy Scouts.
And I don't and if I have a second grader or a third grader, it's not too late, right? I don't have to start at kindergarten to feel welcome and to get going. I can make up for lost time.
That's absolutely right. My son, who's having dinner on the other side of this room, started when he was in second grade. I, in fact, was never a cub scout, so it's it's fun to get the opportunity to do it with these boys. Anytime they can join and they can always catch up with whatever the requirements are for the the badges that Tyler was showing you for each year's advancement.
My son, when he was that age, all he wanted was a hatchet. You give these boys hatchets and other sharp objects?
Tyler, can you tell us about your experience in your driveway with your dad and the other bears?
Use a knife?
We used pocket knives and we cut through.
Some some rope?
Some rope.
And some you made smores after you?
We made smores after we cut sticks.
Well, that's great. I think you're ready to take a hatchet to the wood in my backyard because I'm running out of firewood at this point in the season. Thank, thank you, Tyler. It's very interesting. Okay, if there's anything further, James, I think that was a great, great summary. And hopefully a lot of these new families moving into town will take you up on the offer.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on now to the roll call. Rich Townsend.
Yeah, Robin Bates Mason.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Liz Donovan.
Here.
Sven England.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Mark Mark Jimsky.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Maria Otten.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Rich Townsend here. Penny Young. You have a quorum. Everybody is here.
Great. So the meeting is called the order. First order business minutes. Do I have a motion to approve with minutes for the December 16, 2020 regular meeting? Steve Carl, second, Sven England. Any comments on the minutes? These are new minutes from Tucker. Isn't she doing a great and thorough job? Okay, there being no discussion, just a lot of applause. All in favor of approving the minutes, raise your hand. So John, Steve, Liz, Robin, Sven, Penny, Christine and Mark, Maria, Tom, Richard, Mike. It passes unanimously. So the minutes are approved. Next, we have public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the town council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and address and comments will be limited to two or three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. I only saw one person in the public and she left. So I guess there's nobody who wishes to speak to the town council. So we'll move on to the next item. First selectmen's update, update from first selectman Kevin Moynihan. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, John. Good evening, town council. Good to be with you all. Start off my update with COVID, obviously. I probably all heard my or read my update from last night, call up last night. So I would just, you know, note that we did have a downtick in the number of cases. And you know, we're referring to our positivity rate based upon what we're doing with the community testing six days a week. Oh, next we could go to three days a week because because we had discovered that the state's numbers, because Waveney Care Center is in New Canaan and they were reporting not only the patients were getting tested, but also the staff in our numbers that we we decided not to use the state's numbers anymore. And our positivity rate, as I reported last night for last week, at 1.06% is significantly less than the state average, which I've noticed is ticking down. On Monday, it was 6.71. Today it's a 5.34. That's a seven day rolling average. But and you know, that should give us some comfort that things are better in New Canaan than in the state in general. But on the other hand, I think we're all concerned that who knows what's going to happen in the next few weeks as this new strain from the UK and and other parts of the world are being found in the United States and also in our neighborhood, not in New Canaan yet, but but it's close by. So we're not out of the woods with COVID by any means. And on the other, on the other hand, the so as I mentioned, the testing will drop down next, next week to three days a week, Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday. The demand is right now, we were prepared to step it back up to six days a week in February and into March if we need to, but for now we're going to step down to three days a week. Courtesy of Waveney Care Center, we really appreciate their their support and they're they're doing this as a service to the town. And the good news is we started vaccinating New Canaan residents on Monday, as I mentioned. We had 100 doses that actually stretched to 107 on Monday, Tuesday. For seniors 75 and older, we were under strict instructions by the State Department of Public Health not to vaccinate anybody other than people who qualify in Phase 1A, which were medical personnel and first responders who do medical calls and also the Phase 1B, which includes 1.3 million people in Connecticut overall that we have to start first of all with the seniors over 75. We have about 1,500 New Canaan seniors over age 75, a lot of whom have signed up to go to Norwalk Hospital or Stanford. You know, you you can sign up directly with the VAMS system, which is a CDC designed system and get an appointment. Some have done that. But we will continue the Lapham Center vaccinations either Monday or Tuesday, continuing next week and going forward, dropping down hopefully in February to the 65 to 74s. And if that's all dependent on the supply of vaccine that we're getting, we asked for 300 doses. We only got 100. There's about 46,000 doses, I think, that the state of Connecticut is getting weekly or anyway. So it's being rationed to towns and cities. Stanford Hospitals is setting up to initially at the hospital, then they're doing a South Stanford and a North Stanford mass vaccination. I'm not sure it's seven days a week, but it's, you know, to do 1,000, 1,000 doses a day. So people may begin to be able to go to Stanford hospitals. The city of Stanford is doing in conjunction with Stanford Hospital. So that's the picture on COVID and vaccinations. Give you a bit of update, as I've mentioned before, the CHP is being installed at the sewer plant. The machinery has arrived. EverSource will be installing the gas line soon. So that's moving forward. The the Saks CHP project is in its design phase and we'll go out to bid soon. And the Advisory Committee on Building Infrastructure at their last meeting two weeks ago, took a deep dive into solar and CHP economics so that people can feel more comfortable as to what we're going to recommend with respect to the high school CHP for the budget for next year. And then, as I've been mentioning for a while, I hope to bring an agreement to the selectmen next week regarding the cell tower. I should say public safety tower and cell tower on the Upper Ponus Ridge location that will enable us to bring the proposed tower to the sitting council as a public safety tower with expedited expedited review. The agreements are just about final, so I'm hoping we're going to make next Tuesday or Thursday with the board of selectmen. And then the building, Police Department Building Committee met two weeks ago for their second meeting. We actually toured to Police Department Buildings today up in Newport, not Newport, Newtown and Bethel. And so that process is moving forward. And we're actively engaged in budget meetings for the board of selectmen right now. So I think that's all I have to report.
Can I ask questions?
Sure. I have to answer them.
On the on the testing, it's the hot button that everybody's wondering about. And so the conclusion I got out of that was that there are three sources of vaccinations. One is the town and you can contact the Jen Eilson in our own Department of Health. We only got an allocation of 100 doses, but you can get put on the list, right? We have 15, we have, I think you said 1,500 people.
Yeah, just to be clear. So the vaccinations, what was it, Wednesday? So Tuesday? We had a list that had been building by people calling the health department. And then we also addressed the about 40 individuals who are considered at risk in town because they're on a, they're on a list that human services maintains. In the event of emergencies, we go and check on them and stuff. They may be on oxygen at home. They may have, they may have health, but they have to be over 75 with that. So and then we got up and then we had some vacancies to to recruit some people, but then we discovered many people already had appointments at the locations. I think, I think Tom Butterworth dollars that he had. And I think, I think another town council member got vaccinated already. So but we are focusing, we have to focus on the over 75 right now.
But so I I'm just trying to make sure that it's real clear for anybody who's watching this on Channel 79 this week. You can call the health department and you can get on that list. The second thing you can do is go to the CDC website, which is called what you refer to as the VAM system.
VAM, V A M. It's actually not a, it's a time to use VAMS?
Yes, I think it was set up by CDC. At least it's a federal, it's a federal site.
Yeah, it's provided, but it's, you know, you're sort of going into the Connecticut version, but I and but it's a website that you go on and register and then they, then they email you. It's, it's a bit clunky because you, you can't use uppercase letters in your email address, even if you normally do. So seniors in particular are having difficulty using it. There's also a number, a telephone number where you can call and do it by telephone.
So Ed Hallmeyer reported that he used it. It was difficult. He did manage to get through the process and they gave him an appointment. So I know that at least one person in town has gotten success with the VAMS system through the CDC.
John?
Yep, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I signed up my mom who's 97. So I was able to get onto VAMS, V A M S, as Kevin said. And the actual link for that you can get from the state of Connecticut COVID section of the website under Phase 1A or 1B. I think it's under 1A still. And as, as, as Kevin noted, it's a little clunky to navigate through it, but they send you a series of emails and eventually when they accept you, they then allow you to go and pick out based on your zip code, you know, some location that's not too far from you and you can see if they have any open spots to get scheduled. So, you know, my mom, for instance, will be going to Norwalk Hospital on Friday, as will her home health aide. That's an important thing for people to realize that home health aides are also eligible in Phase 1A to get vaccinated.
And then is there a third path where you could call Stanford Hospital and Norwalk Hospital? Because both of them are operating vaccination sites. And I just wondered whether that was a a third option for people.
I think you have to go in through VAMS or through the phone number. I mean, you have to have an appointment. You can't just show up. So I can't imagine they would just let you do it through their phone. I mean, they're going to push you through the official system.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason that unlike other states where they have people standing in line for walkups, it's very organized with having a time. I would also emphasize if they give you a time for Lapham, please come at the time. People did sort of show up even though they had a different time reserved later in the day. So it's designed to be orderly.
If there's no other questions on vaccinations, I was going to ask a question about cell phone towers. So you mentioned a bonus site and we're getting very close. And I just wanted to ask, the last time we spoke about a bonus site, it was on, I think it was on Water Company property. And because Stanford objected, it didn't go anywhere. So you seem to have more confidence in the, in the next site. It's not, it's not, this must not be Water Company property that gives you more confidence that we can do this. And it's a public safety tower that could be a cell tower?
Well, it's definitely going to be a cell tower because, but it's, it's a public safety tower because we need a permanent public safety tower in the northwest part of town. We have a temporary solution with a antenna on a barn, but that's not a long-term solution. So we, we're partnering with Homeland Towers. The tower will be on private residential property, about 5.3 acres. And most of the neighbors have been talked to, so it's not something that's.
And what matter if Stanford objects, they'd have to object in front of the sighting camp council.
This is, this is significantly farther from Stanford residents across the reservoir than the, the other post tower that we would have owned was going to be on the Stanford side of the reservoir. And the, the mayor really pulled the plug on it because the residents, since they would get no benefit from it, wasn't going to be a cell tower. They objected to it. So they pulled the plug.
Okay, thank you.
We were, we were going to invest $300,000 building that public safety tower. This is going to be owned by Homeland Towers. We will have rights to be on there and that's why we're bringing some siding council.
Great.
There'll be a small potential payment involved. That's why we have to, I've alerted the board of finance and we will hopefully get this signed next week and can announce it. So.
Great. Looking forward to the details. Thank you. Any other questions for the first selectman on anything at all? All right. I guess you're off the hook. Easy, easy night for you.
Thank you. I'll hang around.
All right. Thanks. All right. Next up is financial update, update of recent financial results. Linda, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So you have in your tablets, the most recent financial report. And as I presented to the board of finance, everything is trending as we would anticipate. The one thing, couple of things I'd like to point out, on the tax collections, on the reports, you may see a $5.9 million variance year to date compared to last year. That is really a timing issue because the cutoff date is December 31st on this report. We did have a almost a $6 million transaction that took place the first week of January. So on an apples to apples comparison, we're actually at 89 compared to 88 million last year. And therefore that's, that's something I wanted to point out. So there really isn't that variance. It's really just the timing. Prior taxes are trending well compared to last year. Conveyance fees is still trending well. We're at $1.3 million year to date compared to a little under 600,000 this period last year. The budget for this was a million dollars and therefore we're way ahead of that figure. We are lagging in parking and permit fees for the reasons we've discussed in prior meetings. But all these other revenues are making up for that reduction in parking revenues due to the COVID to the pausing of those payments as a result of COVID. On the expenditure side, total expenditures right now, year to date, halfway through the year, we're at 45% of the total budget, which is consistent with prior years. And therefore, if we trend, if this trend continues, we would still look to come in below 100% of budgeted expenditures. And I believe on the revenue side, we will get close to hitting our will exceed the revenue target on tax collections, which would make up for all the other revenues. So all in all, I don't see any concern on either revenue or in the expenditure pictures. As you recall, we did extend the tax abatement for this, for the, for the taxes that are due for the second installment as we did with the first one. And just like we saw with the first installment, we have not had and we haven't had a big number of applicants for the deferral. And that's why we're seeing the tax revenues being consistent. So far we have under 10, under 20 extension requests townwide. And therefore there hasn't been a significant impact on the revenues or on the cash position, cash flow position of the town. And that's really all I have by way of a financial update. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on the financials through December 31st.
Do you remember what, what was our budget for building permits? And I know in the last couple of years, we were, we were short. We were at 70% of budget and or worse, I think, in the most recent year. But I think the last time we asked you this, you said we were trending to be at 100% of our budgeted building permit.
Right. Our building, annual budget for building permits was 830,000 this year. Year to date, we're at 300, a little over 300,000. Last year, this period, we were at 250 and we ended the year at about 830. So following on these trends, it looks like we're going to be pretty close to what the budget that was approved for the year. Because 830, you recall, we did approve a budget less than we've had historically, just based on the trend that that we're seeing. But this is one that Brian monitors closely and we'll keep providing updates as we go through the reviews.
Kevin, I think it was Kevin or the, the selectman asked for an ordinance where we could, I'm probably going to get this wrong, where we could ignore personal property tax below a certain threshold? Am I getting that right?
On the statutory exemption right now is $25.
Right.
And Tom Woodday has introduced legislation to allow towns to increase that to something, you know, we issue, we issue property tax, personal property tax bills for, I think literally 50 cents. I mean, by raising it to $50 or $100, $50, we eliminate half of the bills and by bringing it to 100, we eliminate two thirds of the bills because we issue a lot of small bills. People who have home offices have to file personal property tax for the first 10 years after you buy equipment. And so it's, it's, on the other hand, EverSource pays $500,000 a year in personal property tax for their wires and, and and their pipes in the ground and aquarium pays for their pipes in the ground. So it's, it's a, it's a significant, significant tax overall, but the the residential users who pay personal property tax or the, or the commercial properties downtown can be relatively small bills. We're trying to eliminate that.
But the sequence of events is that it has to be passed by Tom's bill in the state to allow us to take it up individually as towns.
Correct. And, you know, they will either, you know, the exact wording will probably get changed by the time it gets approved. But I think, you know, given Tom's position in the, in the legislature, I'm relatively confident we'll be able to get that done. So.
Great. Any other questions for Kevin or Linda?
Yeah, Linda, if I could ask a couple of expense questions that caught my eye on the chart.
Sure.
And this is just looking at year to year and there seem to be several that have grown quite a bit from last year. And I was just wondering whether it was a problem or not. One, one is highway that is, that is up $225,000 year to year on a base of about 1.4 million. I guess it's one point, you know, one, yeah, 1.3 million. The second one was the transfer station that is up 162,000 on 100, on the 617,000 base.
Sure. So on the highway, which for the most of public works as well, we ratified their collective bargaining and therefore the, the, the contract was, was ratified this fiscal year. And therefore we paid last year's salaries this year, which were initially budgeted in contingency. So we transferred those funds in contingency and paid a year's worth of salaries this current year in addition to this year's salaries, which are higher than that. So that, that accounts for the variances in most of public works, especially highways, because that's where the majority of public works employees.
That makes a lot of sense. And the last one, you may not be able to address, but the library appears to be up a half a million bucks year to year.
The library is just a, a timing. We pay out there. It's an annual contract we paid out in installments. And it's not, it's not, it's for installments, but they're not paid in equal, equal amounts. We have a big, I think it's like 40% on the first installment and then we equally split. Uh we have a big, I think it's like forty percent on the first installment, and then we equally split the balance of the three installments. And and last year, actually this year, the timing of those installments varied, and so that's what's driving driving that variance. But by the end of the year, the total amount budgeted is a hundred percent of what we pay out.
Okay.
So any variance in that line is just timing.
Thank you.
That it?
Yep.
I was just gonna, I was I was gonna ask Kevin or or Linda about uh parking, and I know Stacy's kind of weighed in on expectations going forward, but you know, we're down about sixty thousand year over year. What is that? I I I was actually surprised and pleased it wasn't more than that. Um are we expecting that to bounce back a little bit? What what does what does Stacy think?
Part of the part of the issue with parking is is the timing of when permits are paid. Um and uh you know, the renewals for commuter parking, for example, are effective July first, but they, a lot of it's paid May and June in anticipation of the of the renewal, so that it's in the prior fiscal year. Uh so I think last year, since since people's maybe you can explain this better than I can, London, in terms of the timing.
Right. So so the the parking revenue, especially the seasonal parking revenue, uh we we send out the bills in May, um and end of May. And typically, as soon as people get the bills, most people start making their payments in May and June and July. So we really have only three months' worth of um of revenues that make up for the for the whole year. It's it's not equally split throughout throughout the month. And therefore, for last year, when we when we um suspended the parking big year, a big chunk of the revenue for that year had already been received just because of the seasonality. And that's what's driving that variance. Whereas this year, we haven't seen that June, July balloon payment, for lack of a better word, because of it's a seasonal, it's a seasonal taxes, uh seasonal seasonal fee revenue. Uh and so that's what's driving driving the variance. If you smooth it out through the year, you it it's a bit, you can see it um can see that the range better, but it's it's a seasonal revenue. We only get it three months of the year. We bill it May, but by June, July, most of it is paid, and you don't have any revenues throughout the year. I'm not sure, did I answer a question, Steve?
Yeah, that's 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 a great explanation, though. Actually, if you did spread it out, it it makes sense now. I I I just look over at that lumberyard lot, and I'm amazed. I mean, we're still at a point where there's literally nobody parking in that entire parking lot. It's it's really, it's kind of crazy to see that every day.
I I would point out that we've also started charging again for the metered parking. Um that started January first. We had a two week grace period. Had uh the parking department had nice little notices that they put on everybody's car, just reminding them. And uh we also have a new um program starting where we've offered free parking to the employees of downtown businesses in the Locust Lot and the Center School Lot. And we got some preliminary numbers from Stacy today. It's been a great response. So.
That's great. I mean, uh driving, driving traffic to those downtown shops right now, especially in January, February, and March is huge because they need every every bit they can to stay business, so. Great idea. The only other thing I saw on here that that's sort of a a big number is that, you know, that emergency man, but we know what that is. That's a three hundred eighty two percent overage over last year, but obviously we made some changes there, so that makes sense. And the last thing I just wanted to mention to to Linda was getting this document in the it delivered to our homes this week to be able to review it, this CAFER. One of the one of the blessings of COVID is to be able to sit down and have time to really dive into this thing. And and I gotta tell you, what a document this is. I mean, from, I I I say it, you know, what, you know, once in a while, you really get to appreciate how far we've come, but this is just an amazing piece of work here. So, you know, hats off. It's really, really well done.
That's why, that's why he got an award for his presentation. And the audit committee really has 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 encouraged that we uh the M D N A, you know, Rich and others who are corporate people understand how detailed that M D N A is in corporate corporations document. And uh so we've made great strides, uh great headway in being more descriptive of of uh of things in the M D N A, so.
Was that delivered this week?
Yes, I I had it hand delivered to the door.
Me too. Can I stop down to Town Hall and pick one up?
You should have.
Let me check then. Uh we have, I may have another another copy, but we did have Mo and his people take them around town, but we'll definitely have a copy for you. We'll get one.
Okay. I'll stop down before lunch tomorrow.
The detail is really amazing, though, Linda. It's really, really well done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions uh for Linda? Really? Nothing? Okay. Then we can move on to budget meetings, and we have a review and discussion, the budget meeting process with Linda, and then we have a budget review discussion. Yeah, okay, and that'll be Rich and Mark. So let's start with Linda, and we'll talk about the budget meetings. You want me to pull that share that screen, Linda?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh where is it? Do you see it? Did it work?
Nope.
That's the agenda.
Oh, you're not seeing what I'm seeing. Okay. All right, let's try it again. Now, do you see this schedule?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Um go ahead, Linda.
Sure. So so currently, the board of selectmen is um is in the process of reviewing doing budgets. Uh next Thursday, they'll vote on the budget. We can go to the board of finance, and then it will eventually come to you. And your first meeting currently is scheduled for September, uh March, March sixteenth. March sixteenth. So what we did here, and and Tom and Tucker were worked together with with myself to put this together, it mirrors the final schedule that we had last year. But one thing that we're asking the boards, um are are there any specific departments that you would like that you would like to visit with um individually? Usually, general government is a big one that I tend to just do the overview. But this year, you know, given COVID, we figured that we probably want to separate out health. So you could hear directly from Jen and and where we are with COVID, because that is a topic um of interest to many of us. And so this year, I think that's one that we would separate out. Uh but we just wanted to kind of have the discussion review and see if you're comfortable with it. We still have time to refine this, since it doesn't, we don't start your sessions until March, but to take a look at this and see if there's any specific ones that you'd like to to visit with. And what we do here, we look at the operating budget as well as as the capital budget as part of these budget reviews.
I mean, are the board of finance subcommittees meeting with the various department heads to go through their budget so that we can piggyback off of those meetings so that we don't have to duplicate duplicate the face to face?
I'm not aware.
I'm not a, I'm not aware of the board of finance meeting individually with any of these, even the sub the subcommittees. I I know we spent some time with the Biden, with the guidance team working together, but I believe that they plan on reviewing the budgets when they're being presented to them.
So are the the departments then giving uh presentations to the board of finance? And we expect them to give a second presentation to the town council? So we are back to the old, old way of doing things where these department heads have multiple face to face presentations?
Can I, can I take that, Linda, just for a second? Is that's that's one of the purposes of the discussion later in the meeting here. Uh but as of right now, with the feedback we got through the the subcommittee meetings that we had after May last year, the answer was people were upset of not having our own meetings uh and being expected to get up to speed uh with the board of finance meeting. And so my assumption was unless some unless unless somebody objects, which is one of the reasons to have this an agenda item tonight, is that's what we would do. And as as Linda said, uh we can be flexible, quite frankly, on on who we are going to see in our meetings, given, you know, they don't happen till the middle of March. Uh and they're going to have their presentations put together. So I I I think the way this is going is Kevin and his and and the board of selectmen are going through the budgets right now. If I understand properly from Linda, next Thursday, they will have approved that. And at that point, and Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said at that point, you would give us a copy of the budget so we could have we could have a month or two to a month or a month and a half to look at what was coming in anyways.
Yes, you're you're correct.
Okay, so and and I think we've we've had the choice, and I don't mean to take all your thunder here, Linda, but we've had the choice of do we get a paper copy or a or a virtual copy? Uh and if it's if everybody takes a virtual copy, it's going to really make it easy to keep it up to date and keep everybody on the same pages. Uh so I I would, I would, I would thoroughly support doing that, but uh I think we can have this discussion when when at when Mark and I start to discuss how are we really going to organize the meeting so everyone's comfortable in May that they know what they want to vote for?
And I think on the um to piggyback on on the electronic copy, one of the things that the the board of that did this year, and I think we're, we will copy them, we're doing that, is having index PDFs. So you can click a link if you're interested in human services on the event, on the table of contents, you could click that page, and it'll take you straight to that page as opposed to having to scroll through multiple pages. I think that will make the review even with an online document much more efficient than a hundred page PDF where you're trying to scroll through to get to the page that you need.
So it sounds like um if we watch the board of finance presentations, enough enough of us watch it either live or watch it uh archived, um we we may be able to cancel or at least modify one of those meetings in March. That's the idea, right, Rich?
That would, it would give us the ability to do that. I think the overall, the overall goal is that we don't have what has happened, at least last year. I heard it from several people that we get to May, and they say I didn't, I I I don't know what to do because I didn't have a chance to see what uh what I wanted to see. Uh and I I wish we weren't, didn't have our back to the wall here on May sixth or whatever date it was last year. And and so the overall goal is to make everybody, get everybody the information they need to make those decisions uh and be comfortable they've had the chance to review it. And you know, you could, you could have watched the library presentation with the selectman on channel seventy nine on Tuesday morning. Uh and you know, so stuff is, this is really kind of in my mind to kick off. Right now, the the data is going to start to become available. Presentations are going to be ongoing. I think we're welcome to almost any of them that uh that are on the schedule here, London, right? And.
Yes.
Go ahead, Maria.
Um I do think it's important for each of uh the town bodies to hear the presentations because I think we have to keep in mind the public is hearing the presentation, and they may go to their representatives or, you know, one of us with a follow up question. So I just think it's really important that the public has the opportunity to hear and then go to one of their, you know, one of us, just to be able to present questions. And I think also, every time you hear it, questions come up, and it's just so much easier to be able to ask the question on the spot rather than, you know, either send an email or try to backtrack and, you know, and then if the budget changes as it goes along, we'll be presented the most up to date budget in March.
Yep.
Uh I'm I'm my interpretation of what Rich just said was uh that we have the opportunity to cancel, not a meeting in March. We're not going to cancel any of those four dates, but we could modify it so that if the health is scheduled to present uh during one of those evenings, and there's nothing controversial about the health department, a rather small budget, and we don't need to hear the presentation again, then we may just skip through the presentation and go right to Q and A. That that that's what I I think is going to happen.
Yeah.
More time for maybe a different department.
Right. I think it should taper off as as time goes on, because well, we will have heard. I'm sure most of us will have heard the presentations.
So um for people watching at home, I I just got the question, can I email the town council the latest version of this? Uh I just forwarded the email from January sixth that I got from Tucker to all three, town council, board of finance, and board of selectmen. Tucker says that the January sixth email is still the the one we're using, so the and the one you're looking at in front of you. So I just forwarded that to you again so that you have it. So there's not a newer version of this published.
No, the only modifications from what you're looking at on the screen versus what um Oh, John, did you send them this exact one that you've got here on the screen?
No, I just forwarded what you what you said.
Okay, so the only thing that we added as far as town council goes is we've added health in in the early part of the meeting versus being in general government for board of finance and town council just because she preferred not to have to wait till ten o'clock at night. She's so busy early in the mornings these days, so we put her on first.
Tucker, can you email the revised one?
I will do that tomorrow. I just made a note of that, and I'll do that right away.
Okay, we all set, Linda?
Yes.
Okay, Tucker, we all set?
We are.
That, okay. We're, and now uh I turn it over to Rich and Mark uh for discussion.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, John. Uh you know, Steve kind of stole part of my thunder. I think the CAFER that got delivered to all of us is like required reading before you start thinking about the budget. Uh and it's it's excellent. You'll read it, you'll say, man, I wish I knew this before. Uh and so I take my hats off to Linda and the financial department for being able to put that together.
Almost all of us.
Uh the the reason we wanted that that Mark and I wanted some uh time on the agenda was really to get people thinking about the budget. You know, it's the middle of January. We don't vote until I I believe the last vote is in May. Uh and and uh we, as we go through here, I want to make sure we're all we're all thinking about what do we want in order, what do we, what data do we want, what analysis do we want that will help us make the decision on what budget to approve, or if there's something we don't want to approve. Uh and that, so that's the whole point of this. And I sent everybody a a letter, I think, a couple of days ago, just to just to think about it. And I put that together off of the back of the two subcommittee meetings we had over the summer, where we had actually quite a number of town council people that that attended them as well as Todd attended attended some, and some of the board of finance people did. Uh but I just wanted to put together a straw man, and and Mark and I discussed it for for quite a while on what was important to him. Uh and what we'd heard in the subcommittee meeting, which is the the genesis of the list of expense items and and capital items that we laid down. And what I would like to do tonight, and I'll turn it over to Mark for his his input as well. I would just like to go through uh what is important to all of us and make sure the board of finance as as kind of the point person on the budget understands what we really want to see when it gets here to help us make our decisions. Okay, Mark, do you have any any comments on that?
Yeah, I I I think Rich and I had a a fruitful conversation, and you know, this is a uh an extraordinary year, so I'm you know, we're trying to broaden the focus a little bit instead of focusing on the minutia so that uh you know, as I said to Rich, I feel like we become less relevant as the process moves along, and we focus on line items that have been probably talked about ad nauseam. So I feel like it's important that we all uh make sure that the goals of the town are being met through these budgets, through the budget, and that every major topic is discussed thoroughly as opposed to um you know, at the last hour, having conversations around line items that we obviously do not control. Um and I think, Rich, that was there anything else that we talked about that was?
Oh, not really. The only other thing that that we talked about, and it's it's in here a little bit, and that is uh uh we wanted to get some kind of focus on on asset utilization and and make sure that we're moving forward on the asset base of the town with who it was primarily with buildings, I think, was where we were focused there and and understand what the plans are for them and where they're going.
Yeah, and we should have a discussion, and I've talked about this in the subcommittee, about debt levels. Um you know, I know we we targeted a hundred million dollars of debt, um but does that meet the needs of the town? Is this the right time to be lowering our debt rate when we're trying to push inflation through? And things may get more expensive down the road. I just think these are bigger conversations we should have, not just focus on the given year, thinking a longer term about the implications that this will have on the town. So items like that, which I think are important as opposed to uh, nitpicking each department as they come through us, I think is at least more important to me and certainly Rich and I share that opinion.
Penny, have a question. Um, the, the issue of um, town assets was actually raised at the Selectman Building and Infrastructure Committee by Stara Salavini. We have another meeting coming up and I think there will probably be follow-up discussion about that. So perhaps from that committee coming from various um, you know, different perspectives of gathering the information that we'll be able to put together a report for actually both bodies to um, you know, kind of where we are with the buildings.
That would, Penny, I think that would be great if we, if, if there was some kind of consolidated view of it. Uh, you know, as I've been on the Council now for three years, we were just getting, you, you guys did a great job on getting done, you know, with the dude report. And I'm really interested kind of where we are. Have we, have we come up to the barn? Have we, have we been spending the money to get the buildings fixed to the, to the level that we thought they should be fixed to or not? I'd be interested in, in where we are, whether we need to spend more money or less money. Have we, have we moved some of the buildings out of the, out of the stock that we had that really haven't been used, et cetera? And I think that's, I think that's a, a town level, town level uh, piece of knowledge that we ought to know as we go through the budget and we approve the capital, the capital raises.
Okay, well, I will see if that issue is brought up again um, at the um, Building and Infrastructure Selectmen's meeting. And um, I know a number of years ago, um, a similar kind of thought occurred about the plan of conservation and development and the recommendations that had been assigned to various bodies to achieve on priorities one, two, and three. And it was, the study was done at about year five or six, if I remember correctly. And it was really uh, quite enlightening as to how many of the recommendations out of the P O C D actually had been incorporated into the departmental strategic plans. Um, almost all of the priority ones had been achieved and I think everybody was kind of surprised. Because there hadn't been any knowledge about, you know, active discussion about departments actually having priority one, two, and three in their long-range plan. So when you're going to undertake a massive project, be it P O C D or the buildings or any number of other projects, it's nice to maybe put some, some recommendation that at year three or year five or whatever it is, there really is a step back. Where are we on this? Did we overstep? Not, not go far enough? Um, where are we? So um, I will um, assume that responsibility to get it into the committee.
Oh, I said, I think that would be great. I, I say, you know, I, I need some kind of framework that says where does the town think it's going and are we spending the money in those directions? Are we getting there over the larger suite of time, not just this year? Uh, and I, I, I'm delighted to hear that when they took a look at that, they were actually on or ahead. I have no idea whether we're on or ahead or behind. I mean, I've read the plan of, of uh, conservation development and it, it points toward what we talk about all the time. There's no doubt about that, but I think it would be interesting to take a little bit, a, a little bit broader and deeper look on. Are we, does, does, does the budget over the last couple of years and going forward for a couple of years anticipate that? That we're, we're going to be on that. I mean, the next plan of development, I think, will be 2021. At the last one was 2014, I think. Or maybe it's 2000, maybe it's 2024. I think it's, I think we're on year six this year.
Tucker, wasn't there an implementation committee on the P O C D?
Yes.
Were you chair of it or?
No, Gres Lecky.
And.
I think, as I recall, that might have been disbanded a couple of years in. Um.
Right, it was, it was internalized, Tucker.
It was internalized, exactly.
Yeah, we, we were on it and then they internalized it back into the, into the Planning and Zoning Commission itself.
There, there were minutes from a meeting in 2018 of that, of that subcommittee of the Planning and Zoning folks, and it was run by Gee, Gres Lecky. Uh, it was, it was pretty short and so I, I was just going out and looking and seeing what information we had. Uh, that was, you know, public information, easy to get to, and I came across that. I sent a note over to Lynn in the planning, you know, in planning and asked her if she had any more information uh, on that. I have not gotten a response yet.
Would that be a function of the Town Council to recommend that they uh, externalize it the way they internalized it so we could get that back out in front of the public? Possibly?
If we, if we could get, you know, if whoever knows, knows where this stuff is, uh, could give us a presentation so we could make it public in the Town Council. I think that'd be great, it'd be great background for the budget.
Okay. So I have something.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
So um, I just want to point out that I'm, I'm going to pull up the um, the schedule one more time. When you look at this schedule, it's organized by department. And therefore, what's going to happen is we're going to go to, we're going to get to a department uh, like Tiger, and we're going to say, do you really need that truck? We're going to go to the fire department, do you really need that hose? And we're going to, you know, we're going to ask those questions. The way this is structured, uh, this, this schedule of meetings is structured, we never get the chance to ask that, that question that we said we were interested in, which is cost savings across departments. The way the schedule is written, and it's written the way it was last year and the year before that, is one department at a time. And I just wonder where is the opportunity during the, during the year to say um, to say, can we share a copy machine? Can we share? So where in the budget process do we ta-talk about cost savings across departments? That's my question. I don't have an answer. And it's not necessarily a criticism of this, of this uh, you know, schedule. I'm just pointing out that that's something that Penny has been, you know, uh, pounding her fist on for, for many years. And maybe the reason we never do it is because our schedule doesn't really have a line item for talking about cost savings.
And can I make a comment on that, John?
Sure.
I think one of the reasons that we don't, that we don't make those kind of recommendations is the plan comes to us as all the separate bits. And, and the analysis done at the top level, we, we never see. Uh, and I, I'm sure somebody's doing it, but we don't, we don't see the, the kind of high-level macro growth rates and, and therefore able to take a, a view of are we being productive and as productive as we should be in the town? Now, I mean, one of the things that we wrote on this list is are we spending efficiently? And, and that's what we all struggle with when we go to the individual department's presentations and question how many pencils you got? Don't, can't we spend less salt this year? Are, we're all struggling to see, are we doing it efficiently? And I think we generally come to the conclusion, we're doing it pretty efficiently. But you know, what, we ought to be able to get some savings across all the departments, so let's cut this a little bit. Right? So we look at the details and then we kind of make this, this gross assumption there's some problem across them. Uh, and, and I, I just think we're, we're lacking, we, we're lacking the vision of uh, analysis of the totality of the, of the budget.
Let me tell you the way the Army does it. So in the Army, if I was the battalion commander, I've got A Company, B Company, C Company, D Company, and I look at each, each of their budgets. But I also have a staff of, where, where the S1 is personnel. And he looks across personnel across all four of my companies. And uh, the S4, he's in charge of supply. And he looks at the pencils across all four of my companies. So you not only have company commanders who are responsible, kind of like department, analogous to department heads, but you have staff specifically looking across all departments.
Right.
And Kevin doesn't have that kind of resource. He doesn't have an S1, an S2, an S3, and an S4 in his back pocket doing those analysis. He's got Linda doing all four of that, those jobs for him, but um.
And in a, in a company, John, that would be done, that would be done at the corporate staff level. It would be done in corporate finance and they look, they would look by spending type as well as by organization.
Right.
And, and they would make those judgments and those judgments would be back is, are we efficient on these, on these two dimensions?
So because we don't have that, I guess we would turn to Linda at some point in the budget process and say, so Linda, what cost savings have you found across departments? And that, that's how we do it. And it's not necessarily a bad method, you know, all the power lies with Linda and his recommendations to the Selectmen. And probably are already incorporated in this budget, right?
Has.
Well, we do. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, has there ever been a cross? I, I'm thinking about the buildings. We have one committee that's looking at all the buildings in the town and how they're being used. Um, and I think the Board of Ed at one point had a headquarters committee. I mean, it would make sense that the, there's some cross-board committees that will look at, you know, look at where the money's being spent if there, if someone's paying rent and someone else has a building, is there a way to match the two so we can save money? Like an efficiency cross-board committee, something like, you know, that, because what happens is we get to the Board of Ed, we get to the budget meeting and we're the last ones to see the budget on the Town Council. So we do start picking at line items, even though we don't necessarily have the ability to change anything or say where money is spent, but that's the only opportunity you get. So, you know, what point do we stop talking about it when it's too late? We should be a little more proactive and have some kind of a, you know, cross-sufficiency, cross-board efficiency committee where we can actually, you know, find efficiencies.
Well, I know that.
I think, I think our, I think, Chris, Chris, you know, just let me answer quickly and then I'll, I think that the, the reason we, everyone keeps saying we need to cut 5% out of the expense is because we know that analysis is not being done. And, and that needs to be a, a, something done at the bottom because we can't trade off how many, you know, how many, how many different people are doing what? I mean, that's not our job. Right? Our job is to figure out, are we efficient? Are we, are we doing this in a competitive, in a, in a competitive, efficient manner? Or are we being wasteful? Uh, and since we really don't ever determine whether we are or not, we say, well, geez, we, we ought to cut something. Go ahead, Christine.
I think, I, well, the first thing regarding supplies and savings, we should as a town, have a central purchasing area that then distributes to the departments because each department right now acts autonomically. So they purchase what they need regardless of what other departments do. And I think it's very hard to consolidate that unless you have a central focal point that addresses that need. Uh, but with regards to what you just said, Tom, um, Rich, regarding the buildings and regarding the uh, maintenance of them, it's very difficult to um, to do it, to not ask the question like Maria just said, on each line item, because we have seen and realized six significant, significant savings, like for example in the health accounts and emerging the Board of Ed's with the towns. It's, there are things that the Town Council contributes by looking at the line items and asking the questions. Or whether it's when a building comes before, it's like the Vine Cottage, how much money have we invested before and those numbers were not available? But memory serves some people to say, wait, we need to look at this further. And we need to be consistent in terms of how we look at our spending. I think that the budget process that comes through Town Council is essential because those savings are not realized always at the Board of Finance level or at the department level.
I will say in Linda's defense, I don't know whether Linda's got a comment on this, but I actually think we do a good, pretty good job. I've seen us in the last couple of years look across, I've seen Linda look across and say, are we, uh, do we have all these different pots of money and can we consolidate that? For instance, when we have a um, when we have these extra funds sitting out there, we say, why do we have all these funds? For instance, like a health reserve, why don't we combine our health reserves, you know? So, and I've seen us, for instance, in energy. So health and energy, I've seen Linda already look across and realize, you know, savings by, by consolidating what seems to be many small pots of money. You're.
Well, I, I do, I do those things at the instruction of the First Selectmen. Um, and, and, and he does that. I mean, we, we are constantly doing these things when we have staff turnover, we have retirements, um, and so we have these internal discussions before positions get filled. Um, you know, do we need a full-time position here? Can we share services? These are questions that the First Selectmen is constantly asking throughout, throughout the year. When we were building this budget as an example, you know, we had the department kind of give us their initial request and we meet with the First Selectmen, with each department head individually, comb through these numbers and, and we have these discussions. Is this the most efficient? Where are you showing the energy savings because we've installed coal, uh, solar, solar panels at the pool? Um, are these numbers factored in? Where are we showing these? Are the discussion we're having now about all these multiple funds that have balances, can these be used to offset and provide um, some tax relief? I think these are some of the things that happen on a day-to-day basis by our CEO. Um, and they are incorporated in some of these numbers that you see coming, coming up. So these discussions are happening, not necessarily at the budget development level, but on a day-to-day basis, but specifically as the budget is being developed, um, you know, we spend a significant amount of time combing through these numbers. And the numbers that you see are not the numbers that were initially presented by, by the department. It's an ongoing discussions and, and review. And Kevin may want to say something.
I was going to invite Tiger to say something because Tiger's seen a lot of budgets over the years. I think you're failing to appreciate what we accomplished in the past few years with uh, making people be much more hard-nosed about their budgets and uh, you know, you have to keep in mind, things aren't very interchangeable. You know, the, the Highway Department can't do much um, other than do their jobs. And there isn't synergy with the Tax Department or the Tax Collector's Office. I, I've been trying to encourage Linda to say, can't we combine the Tax Collector's Office with the Assessor's Office? And they said, no, really, you can't do that. Um, but um, so we've, we've looked at a lot of ways of uh, and we, and we do share some part-time employees across departments. Allocate their time to different departments, but uh, we have a lot of individual responsibilities that, you know, have to get done because they're either mandates and, and uh, each one requires a certain expertise in terms of what they do. It's not sort of like the, you know, with this. I'll, I'll probably get in trouble for saying this, but you know, with, with the schools, there's, there's a lot of teachers who, who kind of do the same thing, especially in the elementary grades, right? We have very specialized functions in various, our various departments. And you can't, um, you know, I, I try to, try to encourage Tiger to come down one man. He tells me how, how, how that's going to impact. We try to persuade the fire department to come down, come down by one man or two. First, there's a lot of, a lot of rules, a lot of union rules and, and stuff that uh, you, you, you can't change and uh, except by occasionally with collective bargaining negotiation. So it's not about the pencils, it's really more about the bodies and, and I've, I've tried, as Tiger knows, to try to talk about reducing headcount, but it's hard. And I think we're, we're a pretty lean operation. I think Tucker, as a new person on board, you know, sees how, how effective and actually how, how um, how, how hard people work in the different areas, isn't it? So.
Kevin, can I make an observation? Because I've been very impressed, quite frankly, with your, with your, your discussion of the budget after it's done and with, and your discussion of our financial performance after the year's done. And we don't get the same very positive, optimistic discussion as we go through the budget process. So all of us go through and pick our two or three key things that we think are a waste of money. And then that gets kind of added together and says, well, sure, we should cut this because I got something and she's got something and he's got something. Do you know what I mean? We, we don't, we don't ever see the totality of, of the town and the positive stuff go, the, the positive momentum and, and the positive, the, the way we've been able to actually manage very efficiently. And so we all pick on these things. We pick on the pencils, we pick on sending the teachers to a conference. We, we pick out, you know, we pick on, on uh, all kinds of things. That, that in and of themselves, you, you have to say, of course, you wouldn't have to do that. The town isn't going to. That, that in and of themselves, you, you have to say, of course, you wouldn't have to do that. The town isn't going to fall apart if we don't, you know, do this. Of course not, right? But when you put it together, the process we have is an extreme, I believe, an extremely good process and does yield a lot of efficiency. Uh, but for some reason, the way we pull the budget, the budget data together and come up, we all conclude something different at the top and, and that's what gets communicated as people watch our meetings. We pick on the pencils and pick on the, pick on the state, you know, the, the indirects in the, in the, the, uh, the Board of Education, et cetera.
All right, are we done on the budget discussion?
Oh, no, I've got, I've got one other thing. John, can I just go, go with one other thing? And that is, this, in my mind, this is going to be a, a much more complicated budget process as we go through it because of COVID. And because people are gonna have expenses for half of COVID and they're gonna have real run rates for the other half of COVID. And I think, and we've talked about this through the summer a couple of times. I think this is a perfect time to take a look at a longer term, uh, a longer term plan of which the budget is the middle year. Two back and two forward. As we saw when the, when the, uh, the, the Board of Ed showed their budget, they showed the last five years and they didn't show what the growth rate was in, into the current, into the current budget year that they were presenting. They showed it was 1.9% annual growth rate over the last five years. If I did the numbers right, their growth rate from last year to this year is 6%, right? And it didn't look that way and it was exactly what Mr. Chen was talking about when we approved the budget last year. So my, my, my only point is I would really like us to see implementing, making a presentation where we see the budget with the two actual years before the, the budget we're gonna have and the two projected years going forward. So we can see where we're actually going. And we can see why this budget is okay and why it puts us on the right trajectory for the next two years. Uh, and that's really gonna be complicated this year. And so almost if you drop out 2020 and 2021 and, and I, I, I know I'm talking wrong in terms of the financial years versus, versus year years. But that stuff is gonna go away because 2000 COVID hit us in, in the, the year 2020. And we're gonna get through most of it in the year 2021. And so both of those years are gonna be really screwed up because they're gonna have extra things we spent. We're gonna save money because we had buildings closed, we're gonna get refunds from the government. And so there's, there, it's gonna be very hard to do anything, except quite frankly, spend what we need to spend. But, but where does that put us when we come out the other end? In the, in the real year 2022, are we at the right spend rate? And have, or have we done something immoral in the middle that has gotten us in trouble? And I don't know the answers to those, but I think if we don't look at kind of a five-year run, we're gonna, we're gonna just totally get confused, totally get confused.
We've asked to look forward three years and we've been told that it's really meaningless unless you can tell me what my headcount's gonna be and what my, what my, uh, how many kids I'm gonna have. I mean, it's the biggest driver.
And, and with all due respect, I don't buy it. Everybody knows what the, what the contracts are gonna be. Everybody know. Yeah, you're right. They, so they, so they've got 80 less kids this year and they decided not to have any less teachers. So is that better? I mean, to say you can't project two years forward is just, it's just wrong. So of course you can, you just don't want to because you don't want to see what it means.
I'm just telling you what the answer was last year.
No, I don't. And by the way, the school looks great this year, right? It's only 6% up and, and, uh, and Mr. Chen said it was gonna be 9% last year. Uh, when, when they were having the budget discussions.
Rich, let, let, let's be a little careful about characterizing the 6%. It, it, it's only, it's only in that range if you make no attempt to normalize for the tremendous complexity of COVID. I mean, it's apples to, to oranges.
I don't, Tom, I'll tell you what, every time I've tried to do any analysis, I've always been told I'm not competent and Jen shouldn't show anybody my numbers. So I'm gonna keep my numbers in my closet. And, but I would hope that somebody in the Board of Finance and the Board of Education and in the town lays it out. I, that's all I'm asking. I'm just saying, this is what I'd like to see. If nobody else wants to see it, that's fine. I'm gonna go do it anyways. But, but I'd like, I, I think that's what the citizens ought to see.
No, I'm not arguing.
It's what this discussion's about.
I'm not disagreeing with your, with your concept. I just think to, to play out in public that, that, that the school growth, budget growth is 6% is, I think, very misleading. So I would just put that footnote on there. But no, I don't mind asking for too forward and too back.
But do you want it or not? I mean, if nobody wants it, it's just me. Don't, don't bother people. I'm worried about it. But I don't know how anybody assesses spending one year at a time and not look forward and backward. I just don't know how you do it. How do you plan for retirement if you don't, if you don't think about what's where you're going to?
Well, we definitely look back, certainly with the school budget and I think others as well. Looking back, I don't think is the issue. It's, it's looking forward that people don't want to do.
So what's our philosophy, um, starting July 1? Are we looking for budgets that are saying that COVID's gonna last until December? COVID's gonna last until Labor Day? You know? How, those are the kind of discussions, you know, I think, you know, what are the department heads aiming for? Or Kevin and Linda, have you given them any guidance on how to make those budget adjustments?
I think.
And if anything, you know, there's been savings because of COVID, especially on the Board of Ed side, and they closed their year with $2 million down in their spending.
When you don't find with that, but.
When you don't have athletics going on, where you don't have travel going on. So there were, there were, there were real savings. Not as much on the town side. From COVID, but, um, and there were expenses, but some of which have been reimbursed. But there were definitely expenses from COVID that had to be, took up some of those savings.
Yeah, I think the department, if you look just department by department, you look at the parking department, they didn't have to add more manpower, right? So that's, they're, they're probably, you know, thinking differently than say the building department. The building department is busier than ever. They're like COVID, what COVID, you know, they're out there doing building inspections every single day at a, at a higher level than they were last year. So, so when you just look at the productivity of two different departments, parking and building, they can be wildly different in a COVID, you know, and, 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 and one is affected by COVID and the other is differently affected by COVID.
Yeah, we reduce, we reduce the parking department staff, transfer a person to, to, to a highway.
Did you add any to the building department?
No, we, we lost our one building, actually, we, we, we hired, but, um, we lost one experienced building inspector to fire marshal. So.
That's why I think you just have to go department by department. And when they stand in front of us, you have to say, how is your department, you know, affected? And I expect some of them will say, I'm down 200 because of COVID. Some will say, I'm up 200 because of COVID. And we'll just have to ask them one by one.
Well, recreation is definitely down.
John, what, you, John, for our standpoint though, we, we, we don't make a decision department by department. We make a decision at the sum of all the departments. So I hope Kevin and the staff have been figuring that out at the department level and they'll show us. When you add it all together, here's the answer.
No, you have a right at the very end, when you go through the lines in the budget to cut Tiger's budget, when he says, I want 200 extra thousand dollars because of COVID, you can say, no, and not give it to him. You have a right. You, we do go department by department, line by line.
That's not what we authorize. We authorize the town. We authorize it by, we authorize it, we authorize it as it's laid out, but they're not obligated to spend it that way.
Well, Rich, that's what the Board of Finance is for. I mean, we do.
I understand, Kevin. I'm not arguing. I'm not, I'm not saying anybody's doing, doing anything wrong. I'm just saying, what, what we look at is when it's added up. What we argue about is when it's not added up. And Steve asked, I mean, Sven asked the very logical question is, what's the assumption on COVID that everybody's operating to?
I, I think, I, I, I think our expectation is next year, fiscal year 22 is back to normal. That's, that's what the budget, uh, budgets are built upon.
You know, and Rich, you know, for a department head, when you come to town council, nothing good ever happens. At best, you break even.
You're, you're right, son.
Right, Tiger?
That's unfor, that's unfortunate, by the way.
That's about true. Break even to be a good day.
That's, that, that's really unfortunate. Because we get to the end and we say, well, I don't feel like I know what I want to know. You know, I mean, there's just some basic things to understand. Are we growing less or more than, more than, uh, than, uh, than inflation? Is that what we're doing? How have we done the last several years? How are we doing going forward? Are we competitive with the other towns? That, those are the questions are important to us, I think.
We ask them, we get those answers.
Not, not, well, you, we do.
Well, we know that the collective bargaining agreement is generally are, are over the rate of inflation. And as Mike will tell you, it's almost impossible to break this, this, uh, public employee orientation we have in the state of Connecticut. It's, 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 yeah, so.
Right. I mean, that's the, you know, as we all know, and I, I've been saying this for years now, is that we are always faced with this proposition of the labor cost versus the rest of the budget, the operating budget for each department. And whether it be the BOE, police, Tigers crew, it's always the same. It's headcount and whether we're gonna get a reduction there for real material savings, which really isn't going to happen. I, it's very difficult for that to happen for various reasons. Or else we go back to what we've been doing, at least in my experience over the past four years or, or a little less, is tinkering around the edges with the non-labor costs. And that's your pencils and your, your equipment, your vendor contracts. So i- in reality, of a budget of, what do we, 150 million dollars? How much, with the percentage of, of, of that being labor is something extraordinarily high. I don't know if it's like 78% or whatever it is. So you're dealing with this, you know, really minor sliver of this overall budget is what we really can talk about because everything else, we're just locked up. Whether it be through union contracts or whether it be through, you know, a department head saying, I simply cannot lose this person because we will see a reduction in the quality.
And you've got your allocations for fuel, water, you know, there's a lot of allocations that these guys are looking at or guys and gals, you know, as department heads are looking at. There's not a lot to steer.
Right. I, in my opinion, I, and I believe this, I think in all these departments off, off, aside from the labor portion of their budgets, I think, at least what I've seen, is there, uh, uh, you know, at the bone. I mean, when I meet with the, the chief of the fire commission, you know, I see the struggle he's making, uh, on, on his non-labor costs to, to keep it as low as possible, but keep the lights on, so to speak. And, you know, and I think all the other departments, at least as I see it, on the non-labor side, I think are at the, you know, at the bone. Um, and I think again, we're going into another budget season where we're looking at, you know, where can we get efficiencies? You'll watch the rate of inflation, you know, what, what do we want to, you know, how can we project out? Where do we want to be? What's important to us? But you know, this, this massive chunk of the budget, we have literally no control over. And I think that just managing our expectations of what we can achieve in the budget, through a budget season, at least in my opinion, you know, we should, I, I have to say, pretty low expectations of how much we really can change once it comes to us. And we put a lot of faith in our fantastic department heads. Uh, but as Kevin said, and I think we all realize is quite honestly, very little we can really talk about and affect change it because we, as the town bodies, you know, aren't saying to a tiger or to the superintendent, hey, I want you to cut, you know, 10% of your headcount. That's it. Get it done and I'll approve your budget. We're not, that's not what we do. It's not our process. I mean, that's just my observation and, and the expectation, I think, you know, going into this for me, again, for, you know, another budget.
Okay. If there's nothing further, we've got about a half hour left in the meeting and we got abundant, a, a refunding bond resolution and committee reports. So let's go to Linda on the refunding bond resolution. Do you want to read it or should I?
I'll let you read, but I did provide an analysis of what potential, potential refunding savings that we have, which is part of the attachment.
You want to go ahead? Or do you want me to read it first?
I, I have one, Linda show the chart first. I mean, you look at the chart, you say you got to approve this thing, so.
Okay, let me, um, Tucker, can I share the screen?
Yes. You can now.
I can now, so let's go. Can you see this chart?
No, we're seeing the list of your files, Linda.
Yeah. Pretty interesting list, Linda.
Mm-hmm. He's got two screens in his office and.
My problem.
Try this again. Now?
Yes.
Yes.
We make a better.
When it comes back?
Yes. Let me do this. Okay, you can see this, right?
No, we're only seeing, no, we're seeing your list of files again.
We're still seeing folders. Rich, why don't you read item eight in the form of a motion and we'll move, move it.
Wow, I'll, I'll do that. I'm glad to do that.
We see the chart now.
Yeah, there it is.
Do, okay. So this was, this was the chart that was prepared by one of our underwriters. This was done back in December, just giving us an analysis. And this is how we make the decision, kind of go or no go. Typically, we look at net present value savings of about three and a half percent. These, uh, this saving is currently showing at a little over five and a half percent. We're refunding two bonds. One is a taxable bond and one is a non-taxable bond, just to kind of take advantage. And so what they did for us is just to look at the existing debt service, which is the second column. And then what the debt service would be with the refunding. And then you could see the delta is basically the, the savings just in, um, in interest rate. So you can see that over the life, you have about 1.7 million dollars in savings, just taking advantage of the refunding. But depending on how we allocate these savings, the way that this was structured, you know, we look at initially almost $300,000 just on this upcoming payment in June and then so forth. So there's a number of ways we can structure this. But this is one of the things that we do as part of the budget process, depending on when we get this approved. And we got into the market, right now, we're looking at going out in March. And any savings that we realize, these could actually impact this upcoming budget that you'll be approving. So by the time this gets to the town council possibly, or even when the Board of Finance is setting the mill rate and the fund balance brought down, we could see an adjustment in the bond and interest payment fiscal year 22 that would provide significant relief to the existing budget.
How the heck did you get $291,000 of savings off of one bond?
It's, it's how you structure. It's kind of, um, well, this is not one bond. This is one payment on the entire bond. So it's how you structure, it's kind of like a mortgage, you know, you have a principal and interest payment. So depending on how that is structured, you can structure it to get savings upfront, you can structure it to get savings down the line. There are a number of ways you can structure it, but this is just one example of how you would structure that to take advantage of this 1.7 million dollars, whether you take advantage of it early on or down the line, depending on what your needs are. This would probably closer to how I would recommend we do it. Uh, given that we're going into COVID and some of the additional pressures on the budget now, take advantage of these, um, savings upfront. And if the interest rates continue to be favorable, we could always go back and, and do some additional refundings and additional savings. Uh, but this is just an example. It's a point in time analysis. Things, uh, as you know, change rapidly, but this is potentially what, um, what we could see. And this is why we do these refundings. We had a similar instance occur last year when we did that refunding, uh, we did some adjustments towards the end of the budget process. We're able to take advantage of that and make adjustments to the budget.
I think I get it.
This is, this is allowed because of the current interest rates in the market, right? We take advantage of this because, because the interest rates are, have dropped, they're down. And you take advantage of them now, and if they go back up, you won't be able to take advantage of them. If they go further, you can do it again.
Right. And we do have bonds because when you issue bonds, you're not always able to do the refunding until you get within that refunding window. So we're now in the refunding window and we can take advantage of refunding these bonds.
Is, is there any reason not to do this?
Well, you could hedge that the interest rates would go even lower and wait. But that would be the only reason I would say not to do it now.
Pretty hard to get much lower, but.
I agree.
Read the resolution, Rich.
Okay. Resolution with respect to the authorization, issuance and sale of not exceeding $32,500,000 aggregate principal amount of the Town of New Canaan general obligation refunding bonds. Whereas section 7-370C of the Connecticut general statutes provides authority for any municipality to issue refunding bonds for the payment, funding or refunding of bonds, notes and other obligations previously issued. And whereas section 7-370C provides that such refunding bond shall be authorized and issued by resolution of the legislative body of the municipality. And whereas the Town of New Canaan, Connecticut, the town desires to refund all or any portion of any one or more series of the town's outstanding general obligation bonds, the prior bonds. Now therefore be it resolved, section one, that the town issue its general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount of up to $32,500,000 to refund certain of the prior bonds and to finance such additional amounts as are needed to pay all fees, costs, expenses and redemption premium, if any, in connection with the refunding of the prior bonds and the authorization, issuance and sale of the bonds, including but not limited to legal advisory, printing and administrative expenses, underwriters discount and expenses in connection with credit enhancement if necessary, and the proceeds of the bonds to be appropriated for the foregoing purposes. Provided however, that the refunding of the prior bonds provides a net debt service savings to the town and that of the amount of the bonds issued does not exceed the amount needed to refund the prior bonds and to pay the costs authorized herein.
And so forth.
You, you want me to keep going or you want me?
No.
Oh, you don't have to read, you don't have to read the whole thing.
There's not that much left. Yeah, no, I would gladly not read it.
Is.
And it's on everybody's pad.
You only got through section two. There's nine sections, just.
It's another half page. No, we've read plenty.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Sven.
I'll second.
Steve seconds it. You got that, Tucker? Any discussion? All right. I think it's a, you know, if you were handicapping this, the only reason not to do it is if rates go down. And so therefore it begs the question, what's the chance that rates will go down? And you think the chance that rates will go up is greater than the chance of rates going down, correct? Linda?
I guess, yes.
I mean, you.
No, but, I mean, we, we would do this for number, one, that the bonds are callable and, and if rates do go down, we have other bonds that are out there. And so there's always other opportunities to continue to refund.
And when you say the window, how long is a window open on refinancing of bonds? Does it open up for a year? Is it open up one time or does it open up periodically?
It depends on how the bonds are negotiated. For these particular ones that are, that we can refund, we could do these June is when they're actually callable, but you could do what they call an advanced refunding where up to 90 days, there's, there's a mechanism where you could refund in advance. And so that's, that's what we propose doing with these bonds and how we've done with the others. The advantage of doing it now as well is also, you recall that last year you did approve a series of appropriations for bonding that we haven't yet done. And therefore, when we refund, we also take that opportunity to also issue the new bonds as well, just to take advantage of the, you know, the, the cost of issuance. So we'll be refunding and issuing new bonds based on the resolutions that you did in May. And when we look at those, we sit down with Tiger and we look at where the projects are. Cause you know, we cash fund our projects and then when we're ready to bond, we issue the bonds. So we'll be reviewing which of those projects are ready to be bonded. And so we'll be combining that with the refunding as well. So it's cost efficient to do it this way.
What kind of rate is the town of New Canaan seeing these days on our debt?
I, I'd have to check. We went, last we went into the market, I think the last ones we did almost about a year ago, January. And we got, we were under 2%, which is where, and this analysis doesn't show what that interest. The sheet I gave you doesn't have that. But I typically get a report from our, from our municipal advisors of bonds that have been recently issued and what those interests are. So we use that to kind of tag. So I can see what the most, what the, the last people aid bonds in Connecticut were issued and what those rates were. And that will give us a good idea of where these bonds were.
John, it's low. But I, I, I think the one, the one thing that stands out to me is that what, this underpins the financial health of our town, which is, you know, we have a, a lower level of debt than we've had in years and our interest expense is going down. I mean, I, I can't, you know, I think the town should recognize the condition that we're in right now, which is only improving as we do things like this.
I guess I wanted to know what the interest rate was because it'll probably enter into my thinking about the library, the police station, you know, and other major capital projects where we typically try and push them further and further into the future. And maybe that was a good idea. Maybe this year with sub 2% interest rates is the year that we take on maybe more than one of these. So I think that's what we're all thinking. What's the, what, you know, what's the real cost of embarking on a library now or a police station now? So.
And John, that's what I was trying to point out before. If you're, if you believe inflation is about to come, costs of goods are going higher, yet you're funding things now at a cheaper, at a cheaper level to borrow. So I think everyone needs to be mindful of that. And, and real assets will be the first thing to go up. And that means what it costs to, to build.
You promise?
I, I promise you.
If you take on more debt, say, building a library, does that affect the bonding interest rate? Or the?
Only if our rating goes down.
Right. And we're, we're well below, our debt limit is way, way below any level that would impact our bond rating.
But it's not as good as Greenwich, right, Linda?
Our credit rating or our debt ratio?
Our debt ratio.
I don't know. I have to check.
I think that's a trick question. I think Greenwich is by far the lowest in the state.
It is because they pay us, they go. They don't bond.
Right. Well, that's what they say. I don't know if that's still true, but that used to be true. Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. Wait, we had a question?
Then let's call the question.
Oh, so I'm calling the question. All in favor, raise your hand. John, Steve, Penny, Sven, Robin, Liz, Christine and Mark, Maria, Tom and Mike are all for it. All opposed? None. And we have Richard Townsend not voting. So it passes 11 to nothing. Okay, it passes. Congratulations, Linda. Great work. Thank you. You just saved this one, 1.7 million dollars?
Well, we haven't saved it yet, but that's the goal.
All right. Drinks are on you. All right. I like that. Don't spend it all in one place. Okay. Committee reports, updates from the committees. Bylaws and ordinances, Mark and Steve.
Yeah. So I, actually, Mark and I spoke a little bit about the, if you recall, we had a presentation from Aaron from the land trust and we talked about adding the language and creating ordinance so that these properties would be exempt going forward. So we are, we've started to work on some of the language as Greenwich. Robin was good enough to forward some language that Greenwich has. And we're, we've actually discussed moving this forward and probably getting it to the council by February. So the, the subcommittee will meet, we'll get the language lined up and then we'll move it forward. So we are working on it.
All right.
And thank you, Robin, for, thank you to Robin for bringing it to us. And of course, Mark and I will be working on it. And we'll get the subcommittee together.
John, I'll, I'll just add that the finance and government, Rich and I don't have any comments, so you could skip over us when you get to us.
Education, Tom and Maria. I, I just want, just take a second to get something clear, at least in my mind. What I was reacting to about school budget is, 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 let's take it to a high level. But when we hear a budget growth described as 6% or 10% or whatever, psychologically, what we tend to do is to react to say, well, that's not a well-managed organization because inflation is too. You know, so the, what, numbers mean things to people. And, and what, I, I spent quite a amount of time today, and I think a lot of people, including the board of finance, and obviously they'll be in the lead, would take a lot of time to figure out what number characterization of the, of the board of education growth indicates that the schools are being well managed in a disciplined way, that they used resources well, et cetera, et cetera. The, the, the problem with using the current, the, the budget that they're proposing for fiscal year 22 with either the two prior years is that the two prior years are grossly distorted. In one case that 2021 is, is grossly understated if you just take the numbers literally as to what we're spending, because the, the problem is that many of the expenses are sort of in, in a, in a one-time basis being, being moved to a different year. Example, one year people avoided healthcare treatments because they didn't want to go to hospitals. Another year, you know, we, it, it, and another year, so we had really entirely different staffing models, different use of staff, different use of, of substitute teachers and et cetera. So when, when you look at all the things going on, it's, it's incredibly complex. There, there are a number of expenses that were avoided for a few years and then pop up again in, in, in the budget year that there were 2022. So, so I think what the, I'm, I'm confident that what the board of finance is going to do. And they've, I think, basically committed to, to work collaboratively, understanding that it is such a complex issue. What is, and what is a numerical way to look at this that makes sense and conveys the kind of message that we want to look for in a budget? And, and I don't know what that number is, but I, I think that the, the correct number that depicts management practices is much closer to two than six. What the right number is or whether it can even be captured in a number, I don't know yet. But I'm just suggesting that we keep our powder dry before we make judgments about, you know, what's going on in the school budget, because it's very difficult to figure out. Nobody on the town council has made any statements about any budgets in the press or anywhere. So I think we're keeping our powder dry. I think we know our lane. We're going to stay in our lane. Well. We shouldn't get too excited. Kevin said he was disappointed in the. He's a selectman. He's at the beginning of the process. Right. He's the beginning of the process. We're the end of the process. And Rich used 6%. And I, I understand Rich was different issue. Everybody understands and I'm happy now. I cut it off my chest.
I think, you know, town council gets the brunt. So you have to understand what the public are seeing, you know, enrollment down and the budget is not. So I think we have to understand it. So there is a resource meeting tomorrow at two, if anyone wants to zoom in and listen. It may be, I, I don't know if any meetings are public. You can definitely go to the board of ed website and get the link and join so we can understand.
Good point. By definition, it's public, has to be.
Well, I mean publicly, you know, easy to get to.
Right.
Yes, has to be.
I have a quick question. When you talk about enrollment being down, it's projected 81 down next year. It's not down this year, current year?
No, but it's the same number they use every year, the October 1st. I mean, it's the only number they use that. That's their annual number. The actual enrollment, it, it could be changing and we know people are moving in. So it, you know, chances are it'll go up and down. Who knows? People are leaving as well. So, but they have to build the budget off of something. So they use that October 1 number.
Right. And, and last year though, they, they projected it was going to be down. It ended up being up, correct?
I think so, yeah.
The projection is that it would be down 2% and it's very difficult to, to monetize that and say, oh, oh, we can get rid of X staff and Y this and do this, all these different things. If it's a 2% delta and you're not even sure it's going to stay at that level. So for a bigger number, I think it'd be more obvious that there should be a budget hit or a consequence.
It's funny because all the talk about new families moving to town, you'd think that, that we would, that number wouldn't be such a, such a, it really struck me as higher than I would have ever imagined, but I don't know.
I think some, some people are moving. Oh, sorry. Some people are moving and staying in their online setup. You know, if they come from, from the city, they move here and they may stay in their school because it doesn't matter. So yeah, we could be surprised in, in September.
But isn't the senior class this year, when the, the senior class this year isn't one of the biggest classes they've ever had in a long time?
Oh, and they're leaving, so.
Yeah. I mean, that was a huge class. I, I have a freshman in college and a junior. And that class though, between my two sons was always the biggest since kindergarten. So.
Okay. Finance and government, Mark and Rich. Mark said he didn't have anything, but maybe Rich does.
You don't want to hear anything more.
John, you didn't listen well. Health and human services, Liz and Penny.
Um, yeah, just a couple of quick things. Penny and I were both on the most recent health and human services call for January and just a couple of highlights. Beth Nizero told us that the food pantry is now switched to being monthly as compared to every two weeks. It makes it a little safer and a little easier for the volunteers. They're still giving out this, you know, equivalent amount of food. So they're giving out a month's worth of food instead of two weeks at a time. Terms of the flu vaccines, which used to be a bigger topic than it is this year. They've pretty much given out all the flu vaccines they had. And right now, they haven't seen a lot of flu, which probably is partly because of people taking precautions for COVID. And it's still a little early yet in the season. They've been working on their budget. They're working to stay within the 2% and they expect that their staffing will stay what it is now. About the holidays, they gave out 120 gift bags that were delivered. And they've gotten 13 new shopper requests from seniors and 67 more volunteers ready to serve them. So I do think we want to keep getting a message out, even though the vaccine now, thank God, is starting to become available. We're almost there. Let's not drop the ball now. You know, seniors need, still need someone to shop for them. The help human services is ready to do that. Penny, do you have anything else?
The only thing I was going to add is with this second wave and, you know, the need to touch base again with seniors to make sure that if they need some help, you know, they'll be connected with shoppers or whomever. They have made 980 personal phone calls to people over the age of 80. I mean, that is an incredible effort. And as you can imagine, with a number of these phone calls, it's not just a simple, no, I'm fine. I don't need to be called. It is a lengthy phone call because for a good number of them, it is perhaps, perhaps the only person they've spoken to, you know, person to person in a while. So it has taken an enormous amount of time. But that's the, the commitment that our health and human services and the staff at, that Donald Flackham are committed to. Um, but that's the, the commitment, um, that our, um, health and human services and the staff at, at, uh, Flackham are committed to.
Thank you, Penny. That was helpful. Uh, infrastructure and utilities, Penny and Christina. Your, Christine is muted. Anything?
Sorry. What I can tell you is that the West, uh, West Road Bridge started construction. And, uh, the portable ice skating rink is on the way. Uh, they found a storage facility or they purchased a storage facility for it and it's being housed at the transfer station. And, uh, we haven't held a meeting yet, but Penny can give you some updates on the building committee.
Um, yeah, uh, Kevin typically does all of the solar and, um. Gas and all that other, those other kinds of things that actually get, you know, discussed at the, um, uh, infra- infrastructure committee. Um, I think we'll be scheduling. A discussion with our department, with the department head of public works, um, after we see the numbers and, you know, have a better idea of. You know, the areas that we need to get a little bit more information from. But we're just getting ready to get in, get into budget.
Okay, are we going to see building and infrastructure? Are we going to see the playhouse? Uh, uh, in this playhouse roof? Is that, is that coming up this year? Because I know that that was talked about in the papers.
You approved it already.
So it's already, so everything we're doing to the playhouse, we've already approved. There's no new stuff.
You approve the roof and the roof will be, uh, out to bid for a spring.
Okay.
I think any other information about the playhouse would come from Kevin as to what the status of entertaining interest.
Yeah, we, we have discussions going on with various parties. There's a lot of interest and, uh, we'll probably have something by the end of February, perhaps.
Since we're talking about buildings, the Vine Cottage, we didn't approve money for that a couple of years ago, and it was going to be mothballed until future notice. But now it's getting a rather intense use again, isn't it?
Fortunately, you know, because of COVID, we had to spread out, so health department is making good use of it.
So does that mean we should expect to have to spend a little bit of money to make it habitable by our health department? I mean, it just occurs to me that I'm getting the benefit of the Vine Cottage and I didn't pay for it.
Well, it's not very attractive on the outside, but it's very habitable on the inside.
Okay.
Use the code of paint.
Do you want the town council to organize a painting party? We get over there, we just whip that thing out in a weekend, I tell you.
Five hundred thousand.
You're not unionized, John.
That was with windows, a lot of the other things, Penny.
I know, but you're not just going to go paint it.
Okay, if nothing further from infrastructure, land use and recreation, Robin and Maria.
Uh, we haven't had a meeting, but just to go over what, uh, was at the Parks and Rec meeting. Um, Chris Shipper, uh, the Chair of Conservation Commission gave an update on Bristow and all the work being done there. They're getting ready for the hundredth anniversary in twenty twenty-four. Um. I guess fencing repairs will be done, that Tiger talked about, um. John Howe gave some updates about the operating budget. He's looking for, I guess he's putting in an extra nine thousand dollars to up. For plowing at Dunning Field to make sure that can stay open year round. Um, he's going to look for an increase in the grass treatments. Um, the big thing was the playground update at, uh, Waveney. Um, I don't know if Tiger, if you want to say anything, but there was talk about, um, improve the safety surface at the adult fitness.
It's about a quarter million dollar project, right?
About four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it'd be two sixty-one, but they're looking to add a playground, which would then, uh, raise it up to four hundred and sixty thousand. Sorry, Tiger, is that right?
That's okay, yep. Right, the addition of, it's about fifty-fifty split between redoing the adult fitness area with a port and play surface and then adding a children's playground with a port and play surface. Adjacent to it.
How much of that is in the five-year plan and how much of that is new initiative?
It's all new initiative, John.
Got it.
But John, that's a good example of, uh, you know, the adult, uh. Thing is, is aging. And, um, you're going to have to do it. Sooner or later, and if you wait until interest rates tick up in three years, you might well better do that now. Um, the playground is a totally new project. I didn't know where that exactly came from, but it, uh, somehow arose in the budget discussions.
Okay. I, I guess I asked because I asked it on the Tuesday call. I said this week, was it on the five-year plan? And, uh, Kathleen was on the call and she said, no, I don't, I don't think it's on the five-year plan. And I said, well, how should I think of it within the Waveney campus versus the couple million dollars we're spending on the building? We got playgrounds, we got Waveney Conservancy working on the outside, you know, so how do I, how do I prioritize even the projects within Waveney? And, uh, she said, good question. If it's not on the five-year plan, you know, should it have been? Um, why not? Is that a Parks and Rec thing or is that a, a part of the, you know, I don't know. It wasn't on the plan and I, and therefore it bothered me that I couldn't prioritize it versus some of the other things we're doing at Waveney. Uh, but I'm, I'm anxious to hear the presentation. Uh, and, you know, what we're going to get for four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, public safety, Liz and Mike.
Uh, not much to report. Um, one thing to note, though, both fire and police now will be commencing their, um. Prep work for negotiations for their collective bargaining agreements that are, uh, up in, I think, June. So that's just something on the radar for both departments. Um. Other than that, uh, one issue that I think Penny maybe, uh, didn't mention with respect to the animal shelter and the. Yeah, I didn't know if you were.
Totally forgot it and, and then when I remembered it, I thought maybe Robin was going to mention it.
I thought so too.
Okay, you want me to?
If you could, please, Penny, you took the lead.
Okay, uh, I just happened to be chatting with Robin and Robin said she was chatting with the head of Park and Rec. Um, about the use of the house, uh, in Coonness Park as a possible location for the animal shelter. And then, you know, Mike said, well, from a public safety standpoint, um, you know, where the animal shelter goes will be discussed there too. And so, um, we arranged, um, an information gathering, um, session tomorrow with Allison. Um, Hom, the, um, animal control officer. Um, this is not a subcommittee, it is just merely a, instead of, you know, a bunch of people going to get the same information, getting it at the same time. Um, it's a Zoom meeting, so if anybody wants to tap in, um, you know, um, shoot me an email and I'll, I'll send you the link. But it hasn't come before the council yet, and so we just, you know, since it's been in the newspaper, we thought we'd get, you know, a little background information.
Penny, isn't it listed on the calendar?
I have no idea. It's supposed to be.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Great, glad we're making progress on that.
Yeah, sorry, Mike, I just totally spaced on it.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Firemen.
What?
Barry Satish and, uh, Mike Esposito are your new junior replacement firemen.
And did they, do they, uh, where did they come from? Did they just?
New Canaan volunteers.
New Canaan volunteers who are now volunteer firemen or are they transferred from volunteer to paid?
You got it, they're now paid.
Got it. And how are we doing that recruiting more volunteers?
Very mixed.
Anything we can do?
I don't know, I'll think about it.
All right, so I only had one thing to add. Uh, I got a call from two of the members of the library building committee. And they said, we just wanted to bring you up to speed. Uh, we've been meeting and we've been talking about, uh, you know, the library plans and you're going to. The town council is going to see those this spring and, um. And so, you know, what's the best way to, um, you know, to bring the town council up to speed on this kind of stuff? Should we meet with you guys individually? And I said, no, I said, I really think that town council expected, uh, to be part of the building committee discussions. They're like, okay, uh, we're not quite sure why you weren't, but we'll take that back to, uh, Bob Bubman. Um, you know, and, and let him know. So Bob Bubman called me up a couple of days later. He's the chairman of the board. And he said, yeah, it must have been a miscommunication. Uh, certainly the members of the town council were invited to the, um. Building committee. We meet every Friday at eight o'clock. I don't know why the invitation wasn't, uh. Wasn't extended to you guys, but I'm extending it now. Uh, would you like to send one, even two people to attend that meeting? And I said, I think that would be a very good idea. Uh, Steve Carl had previously volunteered and he said, oh, we would love to have Steve Carl. And I said. And I'd like to get Mark Jimski, he also volunteered. And he said, oh, we'd love to have Mark Jimski. So because those two popped into my name as the first two who volunteered to sit on the building committee. Um, I put your names out and he said, we would love to have those guys and make sure that they are up to speed. Um, I, I'm telling you this now because I, I, I said to him, I didn't think that, uh, I, I think the town council wants to hear. The deliberations. I think members of the town council should be there in the room, hearing all the different parking plans that you considered. All the different financial implications of what you considered. It's not enough to say, we met as a building committee. And we've come up with the perfect answer and this is it. I, I think Steve Carl and Mark need to come back to the town council and report to us. That you guys thought of everything and that you tried like heck to, uh, come up with creative solutions. Uh, to get the best possible library with the best possible parking and traffic patterns for the least amount of money. So he said, we agree. So Steve, will you do it? And Mark, will you do it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board. I mean, I, I raised my hand a long time ago to do this and I'm, I'm happy that we're finally being allowed to get behind the curtain because. Knowing how decisions are made and, and how you get there is always a process. And if, if Mark and I can bring that thinking back to the council and explain how we got here. Uh, that's going to be great, I think. I mean, it'll, it'll give the council sort of that inside look at what's going on. And we can easily report back and say, here's where we are and this is why these decisions were made. We've done this in the past with. Building committees, with high school building committees for years and years and years. Like Saks, we had representation. So it makes sense to, to get folks in government on this building committee, so I'm, I'm very happy to, to do that. Thank you.
John, I'll do it to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Quite dramatic. I'm sure you'll do fine. Okay.
Eight, eight, eight o'clock every Friday.
Eight AM every Friday is when they meet and you don't both have to go, but you're both invited. And, uh, I just thought, you know, it was important that we get there because, um. I told them, it's not, you know, I told them and I've told some of you who have said that you have concerns. I told them, it's not a foregone conclusion. The town council said that they were, you know, committed to funding, you know, the library and having a great library. But I said, the town council wants to be part of this process. And he said, I hear you, I agree, you know, come to the meetings. Um, if any of you, there is, I think, anticipated in the last MOU, the draft MOU. Was anticipated that members of the town council would also sit on the library board. If any of you, I'll just put this out there publicly, if any of you have an interest in sitting and making a commitment to sitting on the library board. Uh, let me know. Uh, I've been told that that's a little less exciting because they, you know, it's a lot of budgets and. And, uh, just financial discussion. It's not the exciting creative process of building a library. It's mostly financial. If you have an interest in that, let me know. Uh, any other comments? Otherwise, we can adjourn the meeting.
Just one, just one, just one thing, John, I just, we're getting back to the PD, uh, Kelly Coughlin has been assigned to the downtown area. Officer Coughlin, and she has done a great job going around and introducing herself to all the businesses in town. And I think it's great to have that outreach and have the presence of, of an officer in the downtown area, so hats off to Leon and the department for. You know, allocating that resource, so well done.
Well done. All right, thank you, Steve, always with the last word. And, uh, meeting is, it's nine oh seven, meeting is adjourned.
No, we need a motion in a second.
Oh, do I have a motion? Sven makes a motion, Mark makes a second. Raise your hand if the meeting is adjourned. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Thank you, everybody.
Now it's turned, nine oh, still nine oh seven, Tucker.
Nice job, John.
Good job.